Hello and welcome everyone. I'm Nate Clauser, a member of the Steering Committee of Our Revolution Somerville and a co-chair of O R S's Electoral Working Group. I'm pleased to welcome the candidates, O R S members and members of the public to this forum for the candidates seeking O R S's endorsement in their run for City Councilor at Large this year in Somerville. This is the first of four municipal candidate forums O R S will be hosting this week. These forums are being held on Zoom and are also being livestreamed to the O R S YouTube channel where they will remain available for after-the-fact viewing. Since 2016, Our Revolution Somerville's mission has been to transform politics in Somerville and to advance a broad progressive agenda in the city. We invited candidates running for Somerville Mayor, City Council and School Committee this year to apply for endorsement by completing our questionnaire by June. Questionnaire responses from all candidates who applied for endorsement can be found on our website at the link I'm dropping into the chat now. This forum is the next step in our endorsement process, where our members and the public have an opportunity to hear more from the candidates about themselves and their campaigns. Then later this month, our members will vote on whether and which candidates to endorse in this year's municipal elections. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to this evening's moderator, Mary Ann Wallace, to explain the rules and kick things off. Mary Ann?
Thanks Nate. Hi, I'm Mary Ann Wallace. I am a member of the Steering Committee for Our Revolution Somerville in the co-chair of the Pilot Working Group and your moderator for this evening. First, I'd like to go over the rules before we begin. The statements that and all your question responses for this evening will be limited to 90 seconds in length. To give you an idea of how much time you have left to speak, our timekeeper, Chris, will hold up green sheet of paper when you have 60 seconds left, a yellow sheet of paper when you have 30 seconds left, and a red sheet of paper when you have five seconds left. When your time has expired, you will be muted. All questions that will be asked tonight were prepared in advance by Our Revolution Somerville's Working Electoral Working Group with input from Our Revolution members and coalition partner organizations. Though candidates were provided with question topics in advance, they have not seen the questions themselves prior to tonight. We ask that you be respectful of the rules, of the moderator and each other. Please only speak when called upon. Please do not interrupt one another. And please do your best to stay within the 90-second time limit so that we can hear your entire response. O R S thanks the candidates for filling out the questionnaire and appreciates you taking the time to join us this evening. With all that out of the way, let's begin with the candidates' opening statements. For these statements, we will proceed in alphabetical order by the candidate's last name. For subsequent questions, we will keep the same general order but stagger which candidate goes first for opening statements. We'll start with Willie Burnley Jr. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you to the rest of O R S's board. And happy Pride to everybody who's here. My name is Willie Burnley Jr. and I'm a queer community organizer, renter and a former union steward running for Somerville City Councilor at Large. I'm very happy to be here with you all today and for with Our Revolution Somerville, an organization dedicated to strengthening our movements for economic, racial and environmental justice. As someone who stood on the front lines of many of these fights with the Sunrise Movement, with on picket lines with many, many different unions and with groups like Defund SPD and Justus Somerville, I know that our community can do more to bridge the gap between our our best values and our current reality. I believe personally that if we're going to end the crisis, these crises that have come to light for many people over the COVID-19 pandemic, we have to see new possibilities for equitable growth, but putting the power in the hands of the people through community benefits agreements, through a Somerville Green New Deal and by through transforming our public safety in ways that advocates for racial justice have been clamoring for and fighting for for decades rather than by pushing co-opted reformist tactics and legislation that keep the powerful feeling comfy. I've been doing this work alongside some of the folks here tonight and I hope I can have the chance to move forward with my campaign with.
Charlotte?
Hey folks, I'm Charlotte. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a fourth-generation resident. I'm a renter. I'm a queer young woman and I'm a community organizer. And it's so wonderful to be in this room with so many of you who I have fought alongside of on the front lines of these crises of our times, whether it's the climate crisis, police brutality or privatization. So thank you all for doing the work that you do. For me, the past 10 years of my life, I have been working in the public education justice world. First, as a young person politicized around my own student loan debt and the burden that I was going to carry in order to attend a public college. And most recently, as the Executive Director of a statewide community labor coalition that brought together parents, teachers and students to fight and win a $1.5 billion increase in the public education system across Massachusetts. And these struggles are deeply interconnected and deeply ingrained in our communities. And so as a community organizer, I am so excited to bring my skills of coalition building, of bringing together people with different ideas and bringing together folks from different backgrounds to struggle with one another and build the solutions that we need to transform our communities. It is essential that we envision a future Somerville that is bigger and bolder than what we've been able to get so far. One that makes developers play by our rules, one that builds public transit that is not just affordable but free for all of us, one that invests in deep, deep community care and nourishment for all of us so that we feel safe in our homes, on our streets and in our local businesses. And ultimately, building the type of Somerville that is loving and vibrant and nourishing for all of us. So I'm excited to be in the struggle with all of you fighting for this world.
Justin?
Hi, I'm Justin Picota. For 20 years, I've been part of our community as a renter, homeowner, vaccine researcher, climate advocate and your Democratic State Committee man representing Pat Jones District. It would be an honor to serve you as Somerville's next City Councilor at Large. Somerville is facing unprecedented challenges in the pandemic compounded by the long-term challenges of the climate crisis. We need to vaccinate our community, reopen our economy and schools safely following the science, reduce our carbon footprint and increase our business tax base to fund our schools, city services and housing affordable to all. I grew up in a blue collar community. As a grandson of a farmer and a union steelworker and son of parents who were the first in their families to go to college, I understand the importance of affordable education and lifelong job opportunities. Since completing my doctorate at Harvard, I've committed myself to medical research and life-saving vaccines. Over the past 20 years, I've been proudly part of our community in Somerville and I'm proud to help transform our politics to be more progressive. I reached out to nearly 20,000 people in our district by mail, social media, phone and door knocking to support the Green New Deal for Massachusetts. And together with activists across the Commonwealth, we lobbied successfully for the historic climate law passed this year. With the Green New Deal that is now law, we must increase funding to our schools and prepare our students for the green economy of the future. Together, we can tackle the historic challenges ahead of us and create a healthier, greener Somerville. Thank you.
Tracy?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Leah Pratt. I'm a veteran educator and co-founder of Justus Somerville. It is with gratitude that tonight I stand before you on the shoulders of giants. Giants like my mother Eleanor Peet, who as a single mother of three instilled in me the feeling and belief that I can be anything that I want, good enough to do anything in the world that I would want to do. Giants like my grandmother Suzie Taylor, who had little more than a sixth-grade education, who was a domestic worker. And when I angrily asked her why she cleaned up after other people, she lovingly said to me, "So you won't have to." The shoulders of those I've never met but whose ancestral blood flows through my veins. I am here because of them. My platform simply put is equitable access for all in everything that our great city has to offer. A Somerville that values inclusivity, embraces diversity and is socially just in education, public safety, housing opportunity, economic opportunity, healthcare and environmental justice. Our city must begin to critically examine everything through the bifocal lenses of anti-racism and social justice if we are to create policies that will ultimately dismantle systemic and institutional racism. It is it. If the right people have a seat at the table, real change can happen. This is why I'm running for Councilor at Large. I'm Tracy Leah Pratt, an educator, advocate and game changer. Thank you.
Eve?
Hello. Okay, my name is Eve Seychuk. I use they/them pronouns and I'm a community organizer with the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm a trans feminine, non-binary person. I'm a data scientist by trade. I think if there's something you need to know about me, it's that I know in my heart that a better world is possible, that a better Somerville is possible and that we're going to get there by drawing regular people from all walks of life into politics with us to build a Somerville that works for all, not just the wealthy and the well-connected. Right? And this is the Our Revolution Forum. Many of us on this call have organized and pushed and fought to make our city better, our government do better, to make people's lives better. And whether you fought for disability justice or housing justice, workers' rights, bike infrastructure, pedestrian safety or anything else, I can bet you've had one experience in common. In about the first six months or so of doing this work, you've realized that our city government has its whole, has its priorities backwards and that it's a much longer and more difficult process than it should be to make change and that's not an accident. We have a kind of elite politics in this city where maybe 1% of our community does local politics even though it's the kind of politics that's closest to people's lives. We have well-intentioned leaders who've tried to keep their constituents happy, but in practice, the voices that have been heard are the loudest voices of well-off people and big developers. And if you want to know who's being left out of this discussions, you can take a look at the COVID map. And it's time to end elite politics and build a more inclusive city with housing, transit and power for all, not just a few. It's time for social movement politics, the politics of Union United, not the politics that led to a background view of bigger developer, background view of big developers. And I'm here to build that. So yeah.
Kristen?
All right. Hi, I am Councilor Kristen Strezzo and I am, I love your city and I am grateful to serve as your city councilor. I'm a single mom of two kids and I actually live in affordable housing. So I understand very personally what the experience is like. And my kids are in the Somerville Public School System. And I was sworn in during a pandemic and I got right to work. And because I live in affordable housing, I understand exactly and was able to explain to the council and the general public just how dire the need was out there in the early stages, the pandemic still is by the way, when we saw residents waiting over three months for debt relief and rental relief, waiting for an application to be processed. I've kept that as the co-chair, I'm sorry, as the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee, I've kept those agenda items, affordable housing items on the agenda and eviction moratorium agenda items on the agenda every single month because it matters. I've been focusing on protecting our small businesses, talking, invoking our community to examine hate crimes and how we, how we stamp it out in the community. My next term, we're going to be focusing on the pandemic recovery, building us up together, economic childcare plans. I put forth my first economic plan in less than a year and I'm so, so grateful for this. I'm just getting started and this is about continuing on the work with you as a team and I'm so grateful for this. Thank you. I'm asking for your vote.
Jake?
Hi, thank you all for putting this together and inviting us. I'm Jake Wilson and I'm excited to be a part of this change election that's going to transform Somerville City Government. We're intent on running a relentlessly positive issue-focused campaign and I don't see any opponents on here. I only see potential colleagues. I've seen the city change dramatically in the 17 years where I've lived here. Some good changes, some alarming. I want to be part of finding creative solutions to make our city what it can and should be. I'm an unlikely political candidate in some ways. I'm a listener who hates talking about myself. I dislike talking about money. I like asking for it even less. I'd love nothing better than to get money out of politics entirely. And I won't accept a dime from any of the people that you asked about in your questionnaire. I believe in accountability and as a city council, I'll be accountable to the people of Somerville. I'm a democratic socialist and I share O R S's national priorities. And I want to see power shifted away from corporations and special interests and put back in people's hands. Above all else, Somervilleans want a government that works for them, a government that offers good accessible services that help people. We need to address housing affordability and instability to stop Somerville residents from being forced out of the city over housing. We need to make our city a more just and equitable one, one that protects our most vulnerable. Police reform is part of this. We'll talk about that shortly. We also have to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and a voice in discussions and decisions. Thanks for your time and attention. I look forward to hearing what everyone has to say.
Thank you, everybody. Now we'll move on to our questions. The first question is policing and public safety. What do you believe is the social function of policing in the present day? What role do you think it should have in the future, if any? The questions will be posted in the chat. The first person would be Charlotte.
Um, this is a massive question and we could spend hours talking about it. I think the first thing I want to acknowledge is we're in the middle of Pride Month. And as many of the queer and trans folks like myself know, Pride started as a riot against police brutality that was being directed towards queer and trans people, particularly trans women of color. And we know that policing historically is rooted in the institution of slavery, currently mass incarceration and ultimately withholding a system of capital that keeps all of us down instead of letting workers, our neighbors, build the kind of power that we need in order to live healthy, sustainable lives. I view the role of policing and criminalization and mass incarceration as a shortcut to dealing with our problems and erasure of actually getting at the roots of the things that cause us real harm and real violence. I see violence in our community when people are displaced, when people go hungry, when people's voices aren't heard, when people can't get to work safely. And those are the things that we need to be spending our very limited resources on. For me, I view a world, a future in Somerville where people have minimal interactions with policing and where people's immediate needs are met with long-term community care, whether that's mental health counselors being free to the public, whether that's social workers and guidance counselors helping young people, whether that's immigration lawyers in every single school like we see in Chicago or a universal basic income or DPW actually having the material needs to pave our sidewalks and keep our roads safe. Those are the things that keep our city resilient and safe and building a future with that community care, that nourishing, that vibrant love is what we need to be building.
Justin?
So the role of policing, of course, is to fight crime. You know, every civilization in human history has had some form of policing and it's an essential part of every community. I do think there's an opportunity for us to implement comprehensive police reform and increase the diversity of the police department that, you know, protects the community. We need a police force that represents and the same diversity of the community that they protect. You know, I do think honestly that we need to recognize that members of the Boston DSA slate have all pledged to defund the police 10% every year until it's eliminated. And this is contrary to our community's values. Need a police force that actually, you know, embraces reform and honestly seriously considers rebalancing its skill sets so that we do have the option of delegating cases to social workers, for example, when an armed officer is not appropriate. But that ultimately needs to be conducted in a data-driven way and even social workers require funding to pay their salary. Same is true of unarmed officers also require funding to pay their salary. I think we need to take the extremist ideology out of the police funding discussion and focus on what are the needs of our community and we should rebalance the skill sets of our police force so they are consistent with our community's values so that we have officers of color serving our community that represent the full diversity of Somerville and, you know, keep us safe. Thank you.
Tracy? She can't unmute herself is what she's saying. Um, we can move to, why don't we move to Eve while Tracy, we try to get Tracy unmuted?
You know, I think one thing that's great about this room and this slate of candidates is that there's such different views. I think sometimes in progressive cities like Somerville, we have this idea that all the candidates get up and they agree with each other. And I think policing is a really good example of which that's not true. And I think the folks up here have a really different approach. I have to say, I think the only extremist ideology on display is this sort of right-wing law and order politics idea that embraces the idea that when we have suffering in our communities, we put in people with guns to harass and intimidate people and incarcerate people. And if we think this is a thing that's only happening in Ferguson, Missouri and isn't happening in Somerville, I think you need to get out there and see it for yourself. I've been on the ground protesting white supremacy downtown in Boston at Straight Pride and I saw Somerville police officers tackle trans people like me and arbitrarily arrest them for protesting white supremacy and hate. And I think about that every time I walk past a Somerville police officer and look them in the eye because they're wearing the same jacket. And when I see people having a hard time in our community, which sometimes has ugly expressions because people are experiencing oppression and repression and exploitation and they need safe injection sites and they need housing. And the $2 million that the mayor has put towards new police officers would be much better spent on the Office of Housing Stability budget. For me, that is the progressive position on police.
Tracy, we'll go back to you now.
Okay, so we all know the historical implications of policing and we all know how policing got started. We are though, a country that has had police and policing since its inception. Statements like "defund the police," it has a very different tone than "reallocate funds to other sources that will support the police." I am a public employee and I know how it feels for my profession to be attacked. And when we make statements like "defund the police," that is a direct attack. I believe our police have a lot of work to do, whether it's in Somerville, the state of Massachusetts or our country. There's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of improvement. There are bad cops, but there are very, very many good police out there. I'd like to see police provide support and wraparound services along with counselors, healthcare workers so that we can become a better society. Thank you.
Kristen?
All right, it worked. I am unmuted. So I think that there are clearly circumstances where we may need police. Like about a year ago, we had a bank robbery in broad daylight in Davis Square and I'm not about to send a counselor in to handle that kind of situation. There are a bunch of places however, where someone with a gun is not necessarily, and I really believe in reformation of policing, that it's happening and I support it and I'm working towards it alongside you. I think that we have, like not dealing with police, like mental health crises and substance abuse issues and heck, animal control. We can talk further about that, but there's a lot we can do and I think a lot of progress is made and I'm really excited the way that we're moving forward, that we have a lot of steps and speaking to our community about it.
Jake?
So it's safe to say, we all agree the role of police should be reduced now and in the future. Some disagreement beyond that. I don't want to see real meaningful reform get held up in an argument over ideology or methodology. We need to be acting on this. Personally, I was all in on defund initially last summer. Then I heard some local leaders of color asking us to hold up and follow the lead of the people most impacted by this problem policing. So I listened. Now we find our city divided over the best approach to take to enact the change that we all agree is needed. I understand the urgency of the defund movement and the belief that the best way to force reluctant people's hands is by starting with defunding the police and require people to come up with, figuring out how to, how to make up for the reserving shortfall by creating the core that we need to handle social work and crisis intervention that's currently falling on police. My biggest concern is just about unintended consequences. If a police department's budget is slashed, seniority rules mean it's likely that younger, newer hires will be the ones to lose their jobs. I hear a lot of praise for the recent hiring that SPD's done and these younger officers seem to have won over a large percentage of the public. If they were to get pushed out, that would make our department worse. So having said all this, I, I could be convinced on this one. I just need to, I need to hear more from our local leaders of color calling for defunding before I switch on that.
Willie?
Thank you for the question. And I want to root us back in what the question is. What is the social function of policing? My colleague Tracy mentioned, we all know where policing started. I don't think that's true. Policing is rooted in the, the slave patrols of the South and the North. And it is, was created and has always been a methodology of racial control and economic suppression for people fighting for their labor rights. That is where policing started. That is where it is. When people talk about defunding the police and what the police in Somerville do, they actually obviously don't know what they're talking about because most of the calls that are happening to SPD are not about violence. They're about property crime, they're about someone took a bike, they're about things that are not actually what most of people here are talking about. So when we talk about transforming public safety, we need to actually know the circumstances that are going on in this community and where this movement started from. It started with Black Lives Matter. It started with leaders of color nationally. And I was one of the people who brought "defund SPD" into existence. So as a local leader of color, I know that I spoke to many people of color in this community who felt marginalized and attacked by the SPD and by police more broadly in this area, including queer folks who were attacked during Straight Pride. I'm also in Justus Somerville. I know that there is no monolithic opinion about police and how they are in Somerville amongst communities of color. And there are a lot of folks who know that there need to be massive changes, including reallocations to other sources of community safety in key.
Thank you, everyone. Our next question is housing. As a city councilor, what municipal tools would you use not to just mitigate the problem of displacement in Somerville, but to address the housing crisis itself, especially for low-income residents and families? In particular, would you support increasing the percentage of family units from 30 to 50%, 30 to 50% AMI affordable units, inclusionary zoning requirements? Would you support a requirement for developers to create workforce housing and would you support increasing linkage fees on developers? Justin?
So I think the challenge of affordable housing is one that hasn't really been addressed at scale. The only way for us to really address affordable housing is to increase our affordable housing stock. And that requires a new stream of revenue to fund it. We have to attract businesses to Somerville, for example, in life science and green tech that can bring in the needed tax revenues. We need to pay for the city services, schools and housing infrastructure associated with affordable housing construction. I believe if we couple our business development with our affordable housing construction, we can scale significantly to meet this significant unmet need. And certainly I think, you know, we need to take it more comprehensively as you're suggesting, approach to affordability that doesn't just include lower-income people, but also extends to middle class. We need to make sure that there's enough balance in our housing stock and it meets people who aren't just lower income but middle income too. Because I think the middle class is increasingly feeling the pressure, the squeeze basically of being forced out of the city. And so I think we need definitely an expansive definition of affordable housing. And as far as the linkage fees, I believe was the last component of that. Yes, I think it's a good lever that we can use to increase revenues for all of our city's priorities, you know, not just the housing construction, but also displacement of workers due to development. And I was actually proud to participate in the Union United rally today where they talked about some of the revenues they obtained through the negotiations with the developers that exceeded just the linkage fees themselves. Thank you.
Tracy?
I, I absolutely agree that we should increase our housing stock of affordable housing from 30% to 50%. I think that's critical, but I also think that is not the only thing that is needed. I think that's critical, but I also think that is not the only thing that is needed. Somerville is facing a housing crisis right now. People cannot afford to live here. If I had to move to Somerville today, I could not afford to move to this city and live in this city. And I'm a middle-class person. So people like me cannot afford to live in this city. Those who are in public housing, we not only need to look at the stock of what's available, we need to look at the condition of housing that's available, especially to those who have very little, very little resources. Some of them live in extremely horrific conditions. And we need to really examine that so that we can do better by the people in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. I cannot turn my video on. Eve?
Yeah, this is a huge problem, right? Tracy's absolutely right. We've had this affordable housing crisis for decades. And when I lived in Davis Square seven years ago as a renter, my next-door neighbor is a woman of color with two kids in the schools. And her landlord doubled her rent to make another buck and her whole family was uprooted, right? And if you haven't faced these kinds of housing instability yourself and clawed your way back into the city like Willie did, then, you know, you've at least had this. We all have these personal stories of friends, family, neighbors, and community members. And it's never been more urgent to do something about it. So yes, I support increasing the fractions of affordable income in our inclusionary zoning ordinance. And there's more we can do with that, too, like creating inclusionary zoning around accessible units and prioritizing that. People with disabilities who also have low income get priority in those units, right? At the end of the day, we have these developers that are profiting tens of millions of dollars off of gentrifying our community. And I kind of reject the premise that there's like these new streams of revenue are difficult to find. The new streams of revenue are the bloated profits that these developers are already making. And I was at that Union United rally, too. In addition to saying that they were replacing Ricky's Flower Market to build science labs, which is a little bit sad to me as a customer and a community member. They also said that, you know, you can negotiate in these CBA processes to get the developers to pay millions of dollars into our community land trust, right? We need to scale these CBA, these community benefit agreement negotiations across the city.
Kristin?
Okay, all right, I'm unmuted. Cool. Oh, my gosh, there's so much to do. And I've been working as a city councilor, even before I was a city councilor, from testifying on behalf of the transfer fee to so many things. And let me also address these questions. Yes, to all of them. I have been fighting hard for those. What we need to do immediately, though, is we need to increase not just our affordable housing stock or our accessible stock, is the three and four bedrooms expansion. We have a lot of units that come up that are studios, one bedrooms, even two bedrooms, that nearly isn't addressing our needs. We need to support our community partners, such as the Hundred Homes program, and help them succeed. We need workforce housing. That's a necessity. And we also need to talk about the concept of rent control and how personally, we need to frame the language of that. Because when people hear the term "rent control", a lot of people put their ears up because they don't want to hear that phrase. We have to take the lessons learned from the past of rent, past issues of rent control, and modify it to today's standards and figure out what lessons we've learned from it and grow with it. And I'm committed to doing that.
Jake?
Yes, I would support all three of those initiatives outside of anxiety about Billy Toro. I probably hear more about Somerville's housing issues than anything else when I talk to voters these days. If you haven't experienced the impact of our affordability crisis and housing instability yourself, then you have a relative, friend, or neighbor who has. The easiest answer is to build more housing. But we need to do this in a smart way with dense housing at transit hubs like Union Square and Davis Square. And this new housing can't be luxury condos only. We need to build a good inventory of the actual kinds of housing that people want, need, and can actually afford. We need to find a way to ensure that more affordable housing is built here by requiring and incentivizing developers to build it. We need to increase our inventory of three-plus-bedroom units for families who want to stay in Somerville after having a second kid. And we need to be building cohousing at transit hubs in recognition that younger residents prefer this to cobbling together roommate coalitions. We need to be discouraging the flipping of affordable properties by disincentivizing this activity financially. And as a city with one of the highest number of renter-occupied housing units in the state, we're acutely aware of the trials and travails of tenants. And I won't paint all landlords with the same brush. There are good ones and bad ones. We need to be regulating and incentivizing landlords to do right by their tenants. But let's be honest, our hands are tied until there's a repeal of rent control at the state level. Until that's gone, I'd love to see Somerville adopt the basic maximum percentage rent increase for renewals and incentivize landlords not to spike rent on properties by tying the assessed value of rental properties to that.
Willie?
Thank you for this question. As Eve mentioned earlier, this question is very personal to me. After my first year moving to Somerville, as someone who was low-income and working a writing job in a field of my passion, I was displaced from this community when my rent went up hundreds of dollars very suddenly. And I had no resources to stay in this community. And when I talk to people about that, every single person I know has someone that they know who's gone through it. So when it comes to these tactics and pieces of legislation, I would absolutely support them. I'm going to fight like hell to make sure that we have a community where anyone who lives here and who wants to stay in Somerville can stay in Somerville, including families who often tell me that family housing is very difficult to find in this community. We need to make it accessible for families, people who are differently abled, and the folks who are struggling the most to actually afford to stay in this community. Union United has been a great part of that, and I'm glad to be a member. They've been fighting to put more power in the hands of people through community benefits agreements. And I think that we need to codify making that a requirement for any development that happens in our community so that residents actually have a legally binding contract with these folks to get the benefits, not just for the wealthy, but for the people who live here. I've also been doing a lot of work with the Somerville Community Land Trust. And I know that we need to decommodify housing. We need to make permanently affordable and permanently accessible housing by taking it out of the market. And I am...
Shalit?
As a fourth-generation resident here in Somerville, I have seen my family get pushed out of this community. I have seen people I love get pushed out of this community. As Willie mentioned, the anxiety of being a renter, which is 70% of our community, is so real. I think every day, I don't know what's going to happen when my elderly landlords decide to sell this building. So yes, yes, and yes to all of the questions that you ask. It is vital that we are talking about building real, dense, affordable, deeply affordable housing near public transit, especially given the fact that the Green Line extension was intentionally built to address environmental racism that had been impacting working-class, low-income residents here in our city. And those folks are being displaced as the GLX comes in. So building that dense, affordable housing near the public transit routes that are coming in and the ones that already exist. As many of you know, we have been fighting for pilot agreements with Tufts University for many years now. We have to push Tufts to build a high-density dorm so that students can stay in safe housing on campus and so that we are also not forcing out residents in the process. And as Willie mentioned, we have to be working hand-in-hand with the community land trust that is building housing, that is acquiring land, that is acquiring homes, that are not just going to be affordable and accessible to people, but that are going to be public. Currently, I'm a public housing trainer. I work with public housing tenants to build power to fight back against management. And we have to be working hand-in-hand with folks who are living in public housing, who know that their needs are currently being unmet. And we have to invest in improving the conditions of public housing tenants and public housing associations so that folks have livable conditions regardless of if they're renters, they are homeowners, they are affordable tenants.
Thank you, everyone. Mobility Safe Streets. It is currently popular to speak in favor of infrastructure improvements for pedestrians, cyclists, and public transit. Most of you mentioned these issues in your written responses. However, these efforts usually come at the expense of on-street parking or are perceived as worsening traffic, drawing vocal disagreement from some neighbors. How would you address this issue?
Tracy?
Well, first of all, I believe that pedestrians, bike riders, and cars all have to live together in the community and all have to travel the same roadways and walkways together. We need to figure out and find a way to do this in a manner that is safe. I am speaking as a pedestrian and public transportation rider. I have never driven a car in my life. So I believe in the value of public transportation and of walking, first of all. But I also understand that people drive. People who drive need a place to park. Because we have so many renters, as my colleague said, many renters don't have private space to park. And even if you're a homeowner, some homeowners don't have that space. We have to be creative with creating the space. We have to be creative with making sure there's ample parking around residences, but also around businesses so that our businesses don't suffer so people can get in. We really need to, probably as the Green Line is being built, assemble a team that's really going to work on this so that we can continue to have ample parking. Public transportation should be free for everyone. Thank you.
Eve?
Yeah, I've been having these conversations as I've been talking to folks on the, you know, knocking doors in our community. And it's tough. I mean, I'm someone who, I'll bike for pleasure from time to time and I walk everywhere. But I have a car and I'm not like a bike commuter. And I understand that the existence of really, really good bike infrastructure, for example, even at the expense of parking, makes the roads a better place to drive, even if you don't bike, right? The whole idea is to reduce traffic, to make our public ways work and be efficient and be green. It makes sense. So I try to use these conversations as an opportunity to move people on this issue because I do think we have to take their concerns seriously. There have definitely been times where because of like the absence of a city master plan on protected bike lanes, for example, you know, we do things one street at a time, or maybe we only do paint. And then drivers are frustrated, cyclists are frustrated. And I definitely believe we need to step back from that and take the approach of like, from a city planning perspective, what are we going to do across the city to have high-quality bike infrastructure like they have in Europe, right? And I think if you talk to folks who are frustrated about parking, my experience has been that if you can convince them you're really going to do it right and you're going to do it in a thoughtful way, you can move them. And I've been trying to do that work because I really do think if there is common ground that's in everybody's interest, ultimately, what matters to me is having pedestrian safety, safety for cyclists, which means protected bike lanes and green transit. And I'm so glad Tracy introduced in the conversation, free public transit, right? Which is another way of taking cars off the roads in a way that actually makes people's lives better.
Kristin?
Okay, so I like this question. It's a complex question. But we have to, first, I'm committed to 100% Vision Zero and I'm working alongside my constituents to make sure that we're working towards a network of being able to travel safely in our community. I've put forth numerous orders and continued resolutions to address that and talk about that in committee and make active steps. But we do have to consider ADA accessibility. And some of our seniors and people that have mobility issues that can't get around easily, and they do require cars. What concerns me about this topic is, yeah, it becomes a polarizing topic and it can't be. We really have to talk to each other about this. Because we've also got small businesses that are getting hammered and unfortunately, we're going to have to figure this all out together. And what it comes down to is that we will need parking in some cases. We definitely want to focus on making sure that we can excessively get around without, on bike and on foot and do it safely. Committed to that. But we also have to talk about the fact that we will still need cars. Like take, for instance, our teachers at the high school. The reason that they have to drive, many teachers are priced out of our community. We have to figure out solutions. And it's cyclical because they have to go further outside of our city, a beloved city that many, many teachers want to stay in Somerville, but have to move outside. And then they have to park in. We got no parking for them. We have to figure this out together. It's a complex issue. But we have to do this as a community. We have to figure out ways to do both.
Jake?
Yeah, the pedestrians versus cyclists versus drivers battle is a rough one. I'm all of those things. I drive primarily, but I'm also a cyclist and I walk places in the city. We're all trying to get to where we're going safely. But the reality is that, yeah, it's kind of a zero-sum game here. Ultimately, I think it comes down to, it's a mix of meeting demand, incentivizing behavior, and trying to be future-minded. The reality is that we're going to need a lot less parking in commercial areas once self-driving cars arrive. But that's a while away. It's going to be rough in the meantime. It's going to require a lot of compromise and some tough choices. You know, we've got old, narrow streets here in this area, and that really complicates matters. You know, we love protected bike lanes, but the reality is those sharos that show up on streets are going to be, it's a lot of streets that we're going to be limited to sharos. You know, we can't do protected bike lanes on a lot of the streets. And the city has taken, they've taken the sort of approach of trying to go in a direction of, call it wishful thinking, where they wish cyclists like to go. The reality is cyclists don't always like to take those routes. And, yeah, it's, I don't envy city planners in this respect. It's a series of tough choices. I'm actually against requiring onsite parking for residents near transit hubs. It's a position that YIMBY groups have adopted. I'm on board with that. And, yeah, my time is up. Yeah, it's a tough one.
Willie?
Thank you for the question. I think this is really important that we're talking about safe streets and how we create a community where everyone's voices are heard and acted upon. When I first moved to Somerville, I lived on Fells Way West, basically on the corner of Mystic Avenue and Fells Way West. And in an area that has now been dubbed "The Corridor of Death", anytime I walked to the grocery store, because I don't have a car and never have, I felt like I was going to get hit by a car and die. And I know that if I was elderly, if I was differently abled, if I lived right around the corner and lived in the mystic housing projects, this street would have been even harder to move around. So we have to really be serious about the reality of our streets right now. Because some are great and some are terrible. I've talked to a lot of small business owners about this issue in particular and about the changes that have happened to parking and with outdoor dining. And I believe that as an organizer, as someone whose work has been premised upon relationships and bringing people together, I have the skills to talk to cyclists, pedestrians, business owners, and drivers and come up with solutions that are needed in this community, including prioritizing parking for certain people. We need more accessible parking. Our city is not ADA compliant. And we need more parking for the folks who need it most to get to and from where they're going. And we also need that for the elderly and for, and folks like the teachers who can't afford to live in our community and have to drive in.
Shalit?
As a biker, a driver, a pedestrian, and a townie deep in my heart, I am angry however I am transiting through the city, like many people. When I'm parking, I can't find parking. When I'm biking, I'm worried I'm going to get dored. So the struggles of finding and moving through our city safely are very real, and we have to acknowledge that. I think Eve said it best. We have to be building comprehensive planning when it comes to our roads and our sidewalks and the infrastructure that we are building. The Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets has laid out a really comprehensive plan about what's possible and what we are not doing right now, particularly when it comes to ADA compliance on our sidewalks and on our streets. So there are folks who are doing and leading the good work, and we have to listen to them and implement the things that we've already started to lay out in Summer Vision and Vision Zero and all of these important plans that we have done that are clearly not being implemented. Today, I was canvassing on Broadway where the bus lanes and the bike lanes are. And I talked to a resident who said, "Look, the bus doesn't pick up near my house, so I have to take an Uber to get to the bus, which creates more congestion." So we have to be making the T free here in the city, which will incentivize more T ridership, which will hopefully incentivize expanded bus routes, and which will then make these investments like dedicated bike lanes and bus lanes more useful and more user-friendly. And ultimately, we have to be making the investments in our roads and our sidewalks that people are actually using them and they're feeling safe when they bike, walk, and drive through our city.
Justin?
So I think sometimes people are left with the impression that we're making a choice between parking or bicycle lanes. It's also possible to actually add street parking and an adjacent bicycle lane at the same time. So really the dynamics of how we balance pedestrians, cyclists and parking do vary by street and across the city. Um, I don't think we should be choosing one over the other, but we do need to find the right balance. And one of the things I do support, particularly given our experience of the pandemic, is making more of the street side space accessible to businesses as well as the arts throughout our community. I do think it is in our, in our best interest, both in terms of a public health, uh, standpoint, to prevent the spread of the infectious disease such as the coronavirus, but also in terms of our economy to become greener, that we actually encourage more open spaces for pedestrians and cyclists and public transit throughout the city. So I do like to see us making some of those street side spaces accessible on a longer term, if not permanent basis, to businesses and the arts. Now that being said, we, cars need to go somewhere. So we do need to make sure that we use what surface parking we have. And perhaps, you know, make it two levels, surface parking. So we have a place to put the cars. So those definitely need to be a consideration as well. We have to be realistic in this approach. I think we need to avoid the false choices between either accommodating cyclists or cars. Really the answer is about finding the right balance. And I do support a citywide network for cyclists. I do think particularly in the transition to a greener economy, you need to have that citywide disciple network. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The next question is charter reform. We were glad to see that every one of you who responded to the associated question on your questionnaire committed to oppose charter changes that would move Somerville towards having a city manager like Cambridge has. With that option off the table, but recognizing that the status quo concentrates too much power in the hands of the mayor. Please tell us specifically as possible, what changes you would support to Somerville's system of government through charter reform in the next term?
Eve?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very urgent to make sure that we don't end up in a situation like they have in Cambridge where you have a essentially unaccountable city manager, um, who really has no duty to respond to the public and their representatives in the city council, um, on issues like, um, non-congregate shelter for houseless people, which people in Cambridge overwhelmingly support. And they're moving on the city council about it, but if the city manager doesn't want to do it, it's not going to happen. Um, at least in Somerville, we have a, a place where the mayor has a lot of power, um, but is accountable to the public. Uh, of course, we're seeing our first, um, mayor turnover in some time this year. And, uh, I, I believe that notwithstanding that, we should make changes. Uh, I think the city council, and I, I wrote about this on my website, but it's the part of, of government writ large in our society that's the closest to the people and the most accountable and accessible to people. And I think our city council, uh, needs to have the power to modify the mayor's budget, not just make line item cuts that can later be redistributed. If you're like an advocate who's been getting to the city council on the budget, you know what the mayor can do to the budget after the city council has weighed in. That needs to change. And the city council, um, needs to be brought into its own with offices, its own lawyer and staff so that it can do its job instead of relying on the mayor's staff, um, who are independent to perform its own important role in our city. Cover. Thank you.
Kristen?
Am I unmuted? Okay. Uh, yes, I, I know quite a bit about this. Just, yes, absolutely. The city council should have more, more control over the budget. And also should, should, uh, another issue that should be addressed is appointments and how boards and commissions get filled. That it, it doesn't have to go necessarily through the executive branch. And also that the charter uses equitable language. And lastly, I think that, uh, we need to make sure that the city council has its own ability for outside legal counsel. This is essential. We don't have that yet. And also the city council may need more additional staff. It, it, well, not may, needs additional staff. And we need to support that as well. That's on the top of my head.
Jake?
Yeah, the recent movement around changing Cambridge's charter is a good lesson around the city manager approach. Mayor's office wields far too much power in the city. Everyone knows this. Even the current mayor seems to acknowledge this. And that's why support for charter reform is a must for any mayoral candidate who wants my vote. We need a better balance of powers here between the mayor and the city council. Uh, the current approach is better than a rubber stamp, but the council's power is still very limited. You know, in terms of making sure the constituents have their say, particularly with budgeting, as we're currently seeing. Uh, the council needs more precise approval and rejection powers when it comes to budgeting and many other things, as well as the ability to add funds to a budget. It's a basic thing that just is not there in the current budget. I dream of a future where the mayor and city council actually work together on a budget and ordinances and appointments and just basic priorities for the city instead of the current approach that it's ridiculous to watch it play out. And yes, the city council needs to have someone they can talk to about legal matters. Uh, the, the fact they currently don't is preposterous.
Willie?
Thank you for the question. Um, we are, we live in a system that was premised upon, uh, co-equal branches of government. And yet when you, we look at our local government here, we have nothing resembling that. Um, we essentially, um, in some ways are electing a king here in Somerville. And it's preposterous, the ways in which, um, so much power is concentrated in one individual, um, who can in many cases ignore the city council, demean the city council. I think quite frankly, city council has been treated very disrespectfully by the way, by the mayor, um, by getting documents last minute, not having, um, the, the kind of input and context where the matters that are going on that affect people's lives. It's ridiculous. And the council needs staff and they need more support. They need a lawyer. They need to be able to not only do line item, uh, cuts, but line item increases. I think that we should be, um, putting more power into the council for appointments, but not only the council, also residents. We should be having a city that's built by its residents. And that means going beyond, um, the, the smaller ways in which we have elected representatives, but also having real citizen power in our community. And we need to quite frankly, do an overhaul of a lot of these processes because some of them are quite, um, outdated, just to put it nicely. Um, and I, this is a different space, but I really do believe we need to be putting more CBAs into our process so that the mayor is not just single-handedly green lighting all these projects that are transforming our community, residents.
Charlotte?
Oh my gosh, there's, so I'm so much to follow up on. I think Willie said it best. We need to be putting as much power into the hands of the people as possible. We have to be democratizing our city government. So whatever charter reform comes out of the process, um, and I know that we've got folks from the Charter Reform Commission on this call today. I hope and I implore all of you to fight to put as much power back into the hands of people as possible. As other folks have mentioned, the city council needs office staff. They need actual staff. They need lawyers. So they're not turning to the people who have law degrees to basically use their law degrees for free to help write ordinances and policies. So that, those types of resources that legitimize the process of the city council and that engage residents more thoughtfully. I think the fact that there's been staff for the Community Oversight Commission has been fantastic, but they are underpaid. They are not being paid livable wages to do the work that they're doing. And so we have to make sure that whoever is brought on in terms of staff and resources are being paid livable wages. The same can be said with the boards and commissions. Um, that is really hard work that folks are putting in, often free, um, actually universally free. We have to be making sure those people are being compensated for the labor that they are putting in. And lastly, in terms of charter reform, I'm really excited for a new mayor and to be working hand in hand with whomever comes in and even building those institutional checks into the process so that the council can be involved in negotiating PLAs, making sure there are PLAs on construction sites, making sure there's a citywide mechanism for enforcing any CBAs that are fought and won by our neighbors who are fighting hard to make sure displacement is happening with us deciding what it looks like.
Justin?
Great. So I, as far as this question of the city manager goes, I definitely feel, I can understand why a small town might elect for a city manager. But I really don't think it's appropriate for larger cities like Somerville. I do believe the mayor should be directly accountable to voters. Um, in terms of other reforms that we would consider, um, in our city, the question of whether or not the role of city council really is a part-time versus full-time role. I mean, Somerville is continuing to grow and yet, uh, the number of councillors stays constant. So, uh, you know, I do think it is a valid question of whether or not we should be working three quarters time or even full-time to meet the needs of our constituents. And that would also allow us to draw the kind of talent so that we don't necessarily have to turn to others, for example, for legal advice. So we actually attract kind of, the kind of candidates that bring professional skills to the table, that do not feel they're running so they can delegate work to others. We actually want our city council that had, that has rich, long professional careers so they can help run our city. Um, I do believe the city council should delegate funding so it has staff. You know, to have a city council that has no staff really limits what they can do in terms of constituent services. Um, because they also have the responsibility of meetings and the deciding in addition to that. So I do believe there's an option to increase our staffing, but also perhaps we examine the role of city council as of being a part versus full-time role. I think there's opportunities. Thank you.
Tracy?
I should know by now, I need to unmute every time. But I, there are a few things that I believe regarding this matter. First of all, I agree with Willie that this is absolutely an antiquated process that we go through. But I believe that a new charter is a way to begin to transform our city. The charter is going to be a way for us to quite frankly, put our money where our mouth is. If we can, in this charter, embed that our city is welcoming, embed that this is an anti-racist city and that everyone who's here or anyone who's coming into our city has a right to be here, to learn, to grow here. That's a start. Secondly, we need to look at each and every one of our commissions. We want to keep the public involved. So the way the public is involved, part of it is through commissions, through these committees. Some committees are paid, some committees aren't paid. Those who are privileged enough to sit on an unpaid committee, um, and work and change your schedule around for meetings, those are the privileged who will become part of the group that has say so. But in this, in this city, everybody deserves a voice. So we need to really examine, um, our boards and commission for effectiveness and what we can do to make them more inclusive. Thirdly, I'm actually one who believes in term limits for mayor. I believe that the mayor should serve no more than eight years. And I think that that will change some of the issues, concerns that people have had around the issues with mayor. Thank you, everyone. Our next question is inclusive Somerville. Following the murder of George Floyd, the call to defund the police has been supported by BIPOC-led organizations and coalitions, including Movement for Black Lives, Black Lives Matter and Defund Somerville Police Department. Recently, several incidences of violence and harm to the BIPOC and LGBTQ community members have also explicitly raised to the city, Somerville, Somerville City Council. How have you reached out, engaged with or supported and supported BIPOC and LGBTQ community members who support defunding the police? Kristen?
Am I muted? Okay. I'm, I'm answering every question like that. Am I unmuted? Yes, this is, I've been in constant conversations with our BIPOC and LGBTQ community members because we have to, because we are a residency of 81,400 souls. And I have listened extensively as, as I always have and have always left the opportunity for everyone to be able to call me. And if, if they leave a number, I'm going to call them. We have to have these conversations and I want to continue to. I want to hear. I want to sit and talk for coffee. And I want to listen to each other. And I want to look into each other's eyes and recognize that we are residents, all of us, with different visions to be heard and validated and for a better city and a better us. It's a really important vision for us together.
Jake?
Yeah, uh, listening really is, is the key here, isn't it? I mean, I can, I can tell you recently, uh, I mean, we've been over the defund thing briefly. It sort of came out of turn and this would have been a better opportunity for that discussion, I acknowledge. As I mentioned, I'm, you know, I find myself sort of on the fence there and looking for direction from the people most affected by it. So one of the things I'm doing is talking to people. I understand that there's a diversity of opinions on this one. One of my fellow candidates here and I recently met up and I was, uh, I had a really, I thought it was a really productive, interesting conversation with them. Uh, you know, they, uh, they're, they're very pro-defund and I thought it was, uh, I got a lot out of it. I came away thinking, you know, with a lot to think about. And I'm going to continue doing that because, uh, ultimately that, that's how we're going to decide how we need to move forward here.
Willie?
Thank you for that response, Jake. I was the person Jake was mentioning very politely. And I really appreciate this question. So thank you to the team, uh, in ORS. When we talk about BIPOC folks and we talk about LGBTQ folks who support defunding, that's me. I'm in both of those communities. I'm a co-founder of Defund SPD. Um, and I've done as much as I can, um, in the role as a resident to fight for this movement. I've been on the front lines and seen police do violence to our community members. I organized, uh, the Hands Off Our Pride Rally where queer youth and queer folk came together in joy against white supremacists. And then ultimately seen as the police in our community did harm against, um, those same people. And I helped, I helped with Justice Somerville organize a rally, um, for Asian folks who've experienced violence. And I want to lift up the voices of, um, communities like Asians for Abolition, which have said that we cannot find justice and liberation in a system that was made to incarcerate, um, and re-enslave us. So I am listening to these voices. I'm actively organizing with them, not only in Somerville, but across the state. Um, and I will fight, um, alongside movements, um, and alongside community groups like Our Revolution Somerville, Justice Somerville and others to make sure that we have a community that is listening to these voices strongly. Thank you.
Charlotte?
Um, Eve mentioned the straight pride protest in Paris in 2019. Um, I was in that crowd that was pepper sprayed by people. I watched police officers run over my queer and trans friends. I watched how brutal, um, the crackdown on completely peaceful protesters was, um, that was aided and embedded by Somerville police officers. As a survivor, I have seen the pain and the violence of survivors get weaponized against us and cynically used to re-establish and reaffirm an institution that often disregards our pain and does not take survivors seriously. In Massachusetts alone, we have 15,000 untested rape kits that sit on shelves collecting dust. Um, and as a fourth generation resident, I have heard the stories of what the Somerville police was like many years ago and they feel very similar to how they are today. And so when I hear this conversation about, um, inclusivity as a queer woman, as a survivor, as a fourth generation resident, as a renter, I recognize that these are my personal experiences of living a multi-issue life. And I could never represent the multitude of people who live in this city. But what I can do as a community organizer is, as many folks said, listen, but actually bring people into the political process, work shoulder to shoulder to frontline communities who are building a better world and envision something different. Because right now, if we work to tweak and make solutions around the edges of these crises, um, we are never going to get to liberation. We are never going to get to justice and we are never going to get to healing. So I implore all of us to dream bigger than what's been presented to us.
Justin?
So, you know, I am a member of the LGBT community myself, and so I've been on board police reform for decades. And I've been unfortunately in parts of the country where the police would target members of the gay community. And, um, you know, it didn't always have a good outcome for some people that I knew. So I don't want to elaborate further. But just to say, I've been on the board for reform for some time. But you know, I guess in terms of defunding, you know, um, I think the idea of defunding the police does not mean that crime would disappear. It would mean that the cause of domestic violence victims would go unanswered. It means that rape kits would pile up untested. It means that organized crime would go unmatched and be allowed to spread freely through our community. So I do think we need to take seriously the role of the police force to fight violent crime. But that being said, the police get called for a lot of things that don't require an armed officer. So I do believe there's an opportunity for reform, including social workers and unarmed officers responding to certain calls when an armed officer is not appropriate. So I do believe there's an opportunity for reform, including social workers and unarmed officers responding to certain calls when an armed officer is not appropriate. Um, and honestly, I've talked to a lot of voters already, hundreds of voters. And the idea of police defunding is wildly unpopular in Somerville, including the communities of color. But you would only know that if you talk to voters. If you only talk to certain activists, you get a distorted view of where we, people, community stands in this issue. But you know, honestly, police policing is part of every big city. Now, we need to rebalance our skill sets to meet our current needs. But it's, I think it's presumptuous to think that eliminating the police force would be accepted by some of our voters. Um, it actually puts their lives in danger and we have a primary responsibility to public safety. Thank you.
Tracy. Again, I'm going to change the words. I have to change the semantics because defund or defund the police. For me is a direct attack on a profession. So I am going to speak of reallocation of funds. Um, I, I'm going to start with Just Us Somerville. I am a co-founder of that group. And we started the group to give voice to people of color because our voices were being ignored in this city. That's the first purpose of why we started and we began with a rally to address police violence, law enforcement violence. Against, um, those who have been killed, quite frankly, by law enforcement. So, um, I'll begin there and then I'll continue with, uh, some of our demands from Just Somerville that I helped to craft and create. Was a, um, a, a police oversight and review committee or commission. Um, which is happening now. Also, um, as far as diverting funds. Because I'm all for diverting funds or reallocating funds where they are needed. Our city now has a director of racial social justice who is the head of a department. That, that fund is happening because of some reallocation of funds. And that is something I've been a part of. I sat on interview committees. I sat on a committee that crafted the job in the job description. And hired the person. It was months of work and I'm very proud that we have hired Denise Molina Capers into that position.
Eve.
Yeah, no, thank you. Gosh, I was going to say something else, but I was just struck by, um, the fact that, uh, my friend Charlotte came and shared this really personal story and, and the way that we feel, that survivors feel. About the, just re-traumatizing, unhelpful isn't strong enough a word, useless role of the police. And in, um, preventing especially women from experiencing sexual violence. And also the cynical way that that, um, that the, the supposed threat to women from reducing police budgets is, uh, is weaponized. And then, I mean, to, to hear that, uh, uh, seconds later, right? That, um, that the rape kits will pile up the same words that she used. I mean, do better. Honestly, it's, it's not okay. Um, I think, uh, on the subject of, uh, of listening to defund, I, I was there on straight pride. I organized in the, um, uh, in the, in the wake of that. And a lot of city officials who didn't want to make structural change to our system or even make meaningful things for our system. Did a lot of listening to me. There were a lot of like reports. There were a lot of, there's a community forum, um, that was brought in, right? And, and nothing changed. And, and look, I appreciate that when communities are affected, we need to listen, but we need to listen and then act. And that didn't happen on policing and, uh, but this fight is over.
Now for our final questions for each candidate, we're going to do something a little different. We prepared a unique question for each of you that follows up on a specific aspect of your record on your written questionnaire submissions. We'll start with you, Jake. In a modest effort to address housing affordable crisis, the Somerville City Council unanimously passed a home rule petition in twenty eighteen. That seeks state government approval to impose a small fee on some real estate transfers in the city. With the funds raised that, from this fee being specifically allocated to the city's affordable housing trust bond. The language of the home rule petition expressly exempts from the fee all owner occupied buyers and sellers, vulnerable seniors. And transfers between family members. This means that those paying the transfer fee would be investors, developers in absentee landlords. Who profit the most from our current system that treats housing as a spectacular, a spec, excuse me, speculative investment vehicle. Rather than a human right. In your questionnaire, you indicated that you would have voted no on this home rule petition as written. Because you were concerned that it would have negative unintended consequences. What do you think those negative unintended consequences would be? And why do you think they outweigh the urgent need benefits of our community will gain? From putting millions of additional dollars annually into the city's affordable housing programs?
Yeah, uh, thank you for following up on that. Um, yeah, I mean, the, the transfer fee thing, I initially started out in favor of it. Uh, I, I flipped on that basically after, it was after some conversations. Basically, my fear is the unintended consequences revolve around sales that were done that would not be exempted in the, the things you list there that would basically end up with, there's a mortgage on the place. Basically, that could leave a family in the lurch. Uh, I, I felt like this, these were solvable things. And as I indicated, uh, you know, as it was written, I, I wouldn't have been in favor of it, but I felt like it was, it was savable. And that changes could have been made to, uh, to bring it around to where I could have supported it.
Thank you, Willie. The next question is for you. Your response to our questionnaire emphasized the need for affordable housing, housing as a human right. In housing first approaches to homelessness, you laid a, a number of bold ideas of what Somerville needs to accomplish. However, accomplishing these goals would be difficult. Specifically and concretely, how will you work with your colleagues to pursue some of these bold goals around housing justice as a city counselor?
Thank you for this question and I'm, I'm glad that it was brought up so I could come back around to a question we were asked earlier. I heard from a number of folks here, um, that we need to be pushing not only in Somerville, but statewide. To have some form of ability to regulate our rents locally. Um, I heard, um, councillor Stredzlo say that. I heard some other folks say that and I'm very grateful for that. And I want to work with you all on that, um, because I think that this issue, um, goes far beyond Somerville, obviously. We need to de-convendify housing. We need to be moving beyond, um, housing as a motivated by profit margin. Um, but we also need to have enabling legislation at the state level, um, to have rent control. Point blank. Um, and I don't trust the state house to do that, quite frankly. I believe we need a referendum and I've worked on two statewide senate campaigns. I have, uh, folks around the state who are fighting to bring equitable and affordable housing to their communities. Um, and I want to help push, um, for a referendum, uh, in twenty twenty four to bring back rent control. On the thirtieth anniversary of when it was taken away from the people who needed it most. And when Somerville rents started skyrocketing to the current place they are now, I think that we can do that. But it takes more than a city council. It takes organizers. And when we put that energy into these things and we make the connections, not only in our community, but across the state. We can do old and transformative things, um, to our housing market, into our economy. So that's, I'm going to bring my skills and I'm going to fight like hell. Thank you.
Charlotte, the next question is for you. Since March twenty eighteen, Conway Park located on Somerville Avenue has been closed because of lead and polychlorinated by ethanol contamination in the soil. In your questionnaire, you responded that you would have voted yes to the mayor's request for an appropriation in bond. For their remediation and renovation of Conway Park to soil depth of eighteen inches. Eighteen inches of soil is not enough for installing, sorry. Eighteen inches of soil remediation is not enough for the site to use natural gas, uh, natural grass. But it is enough to install, install artificial turf fields, which is the current plan for Conway Park. Prior to the vote, the mayor's bond requested several, several councils advocated for more extensive remediation. To a depth of thirty six inches, which would have cost the city an additional one point two million. But would have made possible using natural grass instead of artificial turf. Can you explain your position on this issue and how you will approach similar needs? The city may face for environmental remediation moving forward.
Um, I'm really excited to be running as a community organizer because it allows me to acknowledge that I don't have all the expertise or all the answers on the questions that we're going to be asked as counselors. Um, and also starting the very humble process of acknowledging when I'm wrong. Um, honestly, I made a mistake and I didn't answer the question how I would have. Um, and so I agree with what was just framed in the chat in terms of actually making the thirty six inch, um, re, remediation that is necessary. And spending the one point two million dollars to do that. Um, that is a drop in the bucket when it comes to actually building the type of green infrastructure that we need here in the city. Um, and so I'm excited that I made this mistake so that we can all show ourselves what it's like to be humbled by the errors that we make. Because we are going to screw up along the way. Um, but also recommit myself to the environmental justice principles that I know that I'm committed to. When I was first an environmental justice activist in college, I helped make the UMass system the first public university in the country to divest from fossil fuels. And so ensuring that any decisions that we make take into consideration the climate impacts and the environmental impacts that are going to happen to our city. Is going to be critical. Um, if I was on the council, I would have absolutely made the decision to have grass. Um, we have to be addressing the fact that Somerville is going to be and is already an urban heat island. Um, and so more tree canopy, more grass, more open space, more green space is going to be critical to keeping our city a little bit cooler. Um, but also addressing the long-term consequences of climate change here in Somerville.
Justin, the next question is for you. You declined to answer any of the questions directly, including question fifty five, which addressed the values of the Green New Deal. But you did mention that you supported and pushed Massachusetts Democratic Committee to endorse several bills. That you refer to as the Green New Deal for Massachusetts. The national Green New Deal as outlined by AOC and NMAC explicitly centers the need of those who would be impacted by climate change and those who are most vulnerable in our, our economy. However, the bills that you advocated included H seven seven eight, a carbon pricing bill. And H three six two nine, which offers rebates to consumers to offset the cost of electric vehicles, et cetera. The, the incentives in these bills favor employee employers and those who can afford to purchase renewable energy options. Do you believe that that set of bills that you call a Green New Deal for Massachusetts centers the values of the national grant Green New Deal? If so, how?
So I responded to your questions in paragraph form because I believe it's important not to take simplistic yes or no policy positions. But to tell people the why and the how you're going to do it. Cause why is really how much you care. The how is what you plan to do about it. In terms of the bills I proposed, uh, they actually include exceptions for lower income communities. And the new, the final climate law that was passed actually has environmental justice language, which I strongly support. Environmental justice language that makes grants and job opportunities available to communities that are most impacted by pollution, including in some, you Somerville. So as far as do the, the bills that I support represent the spirit of the Green New Deal at the federal level. Keep in mind, the Green New Deal at the federal level is not a legislative document. It is a campaign document. And so campaign documents are not written the same way as actual law. And so what we've implemented in Massachusetts puts us on track to reduce our carbon emissions, uh, by twenty fifty, if not sooner. I think Somerville needs to lead the way by bringing our own municipal own fleets to car, and buildings to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. And to bring the rest of our economy to carbon neutral, uh, by twenty fifty at the latest. So we do actually have a lot of work to do to actually implement the new Massachusetts climate law. That is completely consistent with our values. Um, but I think it's very easy. So my opponents actually haven't done any work on this issue to be dismissive of what we have accomplished. But honestly, if you're dismissing the climate law, you're only putting opposition to something that's critical. And so I look forward to helping build a healthier Green New Somerville.
Tracy, the next question is for you. You made it clear in your response and to our questionnaire and at the SEU forum, your strategy, strategy centered on partnership. Between the Somerville Police Department and the community schools included. You also call for police to be part of school restorative justice programs. But real partnership requires a mutually agreed upon consented relationship. Given the evidence in Somerville and nationwide of the harsh trauma and illegal acts police inflict on LBGTQ. And BIPOC community men, members. Many Somerville community members, including undocumented residents and children and parents of color. Feel unsafe and are not aligned to consenting to a partnership. How can a genuine partnership be built and how would you do that while honoring the commitment you made in your questionnaire? To an annual ten percent decrease in the police budget next term?
So, first of all, the place for me to start is with the police oath, the police mission and the police code of conduct. That call for partnership and relationship with the community. Partnerships are absolutely hard to create, especially when there's a group that is offended and is not comfortable. But at the same time, I personally know community members, community members of color, community members in some of the most vulnerable places in our city that want to, that are not in favor of abolishing the police. So I think the place to start is with the oath. I think the second place to start is with training. And not just training for, for the police. Um, we, we, yes, the police. I will say the, the police at large are racist institution. So are public schools. So is our city government. And the only way that we are going to address it is through constant discussion, constant ongoing training. Which is something that I have called for over the past year. Four hours, six hours of training isn't going to do it. But ongoing training, anti-racist work, anti-racist training and community building. Circles, conversations with people, um, people in the city and the police in plain clothes, discussion. This is how we would start to work and I'd be willing to be part of that process and part of those meetings.
Eve, the next question is for you. Your response to our questionnaire emphasized the need for affordable housing, housing as a human right and housing first approaches to homelessness. You laid a number of bold ideas of what Somerville needs to accomplish. However, accomplishing these goals will be difficult. Specifically and concretely, how will you work with your colleagues to pursue, pursue some of these bold goals around housing justice as a city counselor?
I love this question. I think, um, one reason, uh, why, uh, I think it's so important to elect community organizers to these city council positions. Is because of the important role that we can play and use our, these offices to organize in our community. To apply mass pressure to the powerful forces in society, um, like the big developers and the out of town corporate landlords. And, uh, big business, a biotech business, right, that don't want these kinds of reforms to happen, these big changes to happen because they don't want to pay for them. But the thing is people power is strong, right? And I really believe that. I don't think these things are going to be easy. I don't think they're going to be able to be one behind closed doors in a city hall meeting or a committee meeting. Or at Ruth Chris Steakhouse, you know, or wherever these kinds of deals are made. Um, they're going to be made in the streets and in the halls of power by our movement. And I think that we've seen, um, both in Somerville and across the country. That when working people are organized in the thousands and they demand a living wage, right? There, we, there was a national movement for fifteen dollar hour initial, uh, minimum wage ignited, um, uh, in the early twenty teens. Um, by one city taking that on, right? I want to be that city and I think we can. Um, and I think we shouldn't be afraid to think big. Um, and I don't see any contradiction between taking on these big proposals and mom bringing an unprecedented number of people into the halls of power and into Somerville politics, uh, to accomplish them. And making sure we get them right. And so I'll work with city councillors to make sure we get it right, but we're going to do big things.
Kristen, the, this question's for you. In a recent confirmation of appointments committee meeting, you had a tense exchange with councillor Mabah. Which elicited a statement from Just Us Somerville, a community group of residents. which elicited a statement from Just Us Somerville, a community group of residents of color. You questioned Council Mabah's call for more diverse hiring practices, in particular for police and fire appointments. You contrasted this with the highly diverse set of police candidates recently brought before the committee, which Council Mabah voted against. Your response to Council Mabah's explanation of his position by speaking over him with repeated statements that included, "I certainly don't want to be yelled at." In the moment, Council Mabah said he felt like he was being gaslighted. Just Us called your reaction a performance of tears connected to a long history of white women's tears in distress, being weaponized against black men. What steps have you taken since this incident to re, re-address the harm you caused?
I think this is a great question, and I strive to be anti-racist. And all of us, all of us have grown up and exist within a white supremacist racist culture. And all of us have to reckon with that. It's important. And I have done a lot of work since then. I'm, I'm very happy to say, all of us have to have really, have to really address this. I did my own rent anti-racist training with my team. And I continue to read books, and I've reached out one-on-one. And I've checked in with friends, and I've checked in and apologized when necessary and talked heart to heart and connected because it's vitally important. The work is ongoing and will last the rest of my life, just like I hope it is for the rest of us as well. I've reached out to our racial and social justice director and connected with her. I support her work, and I want to make sure she's respected and her vision is respected in, in meetings and communities and, in our community, and the work that, that will be done in our community. This is a collective process of all of us, and I want to make sure that I'm learning alongside with it. It takes all of us, and I'm, I'm, I want to be my best city councilor, and I want to be my best citizen and resident and anti-racist.
Thank you. That was our final question for tonight. We'd like to thank everybody for coming and participating in this forum, and for all the people who watched. A reminder that each of these candidate questionnaire responses are on the endorsement and elections section of the website of ourrevolution.org. Our next forum will be Tuesday night at seven with candidates seeking O R S endorsement for their run for school committee. Until then, everybody have a good night. Thank you.